In democracy tonight, the city council regular meeting for Thursday, January 29th. And with that, I've asked Vice Sheriff Tony to lead us in the pledge of leaders.
Tracy.
My pledge of leaders.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council members and everyone in the audience. Appreciate that very much. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
I move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Are there any comments or discussion? There are none. It's adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, council. Without moving on to public comments, Chief Harden. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Um, well, we have no one signed up for public comments. Max, would you like to make public comment? You're just joining us. It's nice to see you. You have a unique situation, my friend. You have all of us and our divided attention. So, welcome. All right. With that, we'll close public comment. Thank you, everybody. Well, excuse me, I'm supposed to say the words here. The council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might not, might have purview over or control over. However, the mayor of council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of the nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor may request the speakers suspend their comments. This, the council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the pop, by the public. Excuse me, comments are limited to a three minute time limit. We have no one in the audience that would like, in council chambers that like me public comment. With that, we'll close public comment. Okay, with that, we're moving on to presentations. We have a fun presentation night. Administrator Hill, we're going to have Chelsea Benning. Is that correct? Is that spelled? Yes, is going to join us. Hi, Chelsea.
Hello, thank you. I can't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Welcome. This is regarding the community survey results, and I know there are many members of the community that are very anxious to hear these results. So, Chelsea, you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. I appreciate the time this evening. I am going to share a presentation. And hopefully you are able to all see this. And I understand I have 20 minutes to go through this presentation. I know that you have a copy of this as well in your packets. I do want to just call everyone's attention to the fact that this is a slightly abbreviated set of slides, given the amount of time that we have, what you will see in your packet. But I'm happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of this, both with these slides as well as any other slides that may have been included. As has been introduced, we're going to be talking about a survey that was conducted in December among all of the citizens of Lake Forest Park. Up on the slide here, we see the reasons why we conducted the survey and our objectives for the survey. The survey really is a community perception study to understand how residents are feeling about the city as well as their awareness and attitudes towards previous levy efforts, understanding why those were unsuccessful, and exploring some possible levy structures and positioning that we may or may not be presented in the future to understand how residents would react to that. We also hope to understand some effective messaging and communication surrounding that levy in order to bring it to success, should it go forward. A brief couple of comments on the methodology. I don't want to get into this too detailed. It's also very important, though, to understand that we did use a population-based approach that is projectable to the entire population. We had an overwhelming response, much higher than we expected, and one of the highest I've ever seen. A total of almost 1,918 surveys were included in the final data set. We did a multi-methodology approach. Every household in that we could identify within the city was mailed a packet, a survey packet. The mails went out just after the the national election on November 6th, and we closed data collection on November 26, 20 days later. So, very quick response as well. The survey packet included a survey that could be filled out and returned in the mail or a QR code and an online link that they could go on and complete the survey online if they preferred. The reason why we did it in this two-phased way was to ensure that everybody would have an opportunity to respond, not just those who may be digitally connected. We sent it to a total of 5,395 households. The survey was offered in both English and Spanish. And we did get a number of individuals who called in because they had never received their packet. We offered to do those surveys with them over the phones. We collected about five people's responses that way. Overall, response rate is 17%. As I said before, this is astronomical. I've done a lot of these surveys in a lot of different municipalities. This is one of the highest that I've ever seen. So, you obviously have a very engaged group. Confidence interval, what we mean by that is how confident can we be that the survey responses that we received are accurate? And that is expressed in a plus or minus, so plus or minus 2.95%. So, each of the proportions that I present on the following slides are accurate within that confidence margin of plus or minus about 3%. One other note about this, and then I will move on. When we talk about a confidence interval, we are talking about people's beliefs as they express to them and not necessarily what they actually do or don't do. And it also is a point in time. So, how they are feeling as they fill out the survey, obviously, those beliefs change and can be changed. People who say that they may be doing one thing in the future may or may not do that depending on what happens between now and that future. And similarly, people who talk about what they have done in the past or how they have voted in the past may not be 100% correct. People have faulty memories, things change, et cetera. Also, I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to this slide where it applies. For all, though, as I mentioned, your survey respondents were highly engaged voters. 97% were currently registered to vote. And 98% had just voted in the general election, and the vast majority are planning to vote in the November 2025 election. So, we can be confident that these are reflective of the voting population. We always get a couple of questions about who responded to the survey. So, that's represented here on this particular slide. The Lake Forest Park population is an affluent older population when you compare it to other areas of the greater Seattle or Puget Sound area. Gender is slightly skewed male at 49%. The vast majority own their home. They lived in Lake Forest Park for many years. Most of them do not have children. That's a reflection of the fact that it is an older population with an average age of 58. And as I mentioned, household income tends to be quite affluent. On this slide, we started off the survey with some general questions, just sort of as warm up, as also just to kind of try and understand people's overall feelings about how things are going in Lake Forest Park. 79% said they felt that things were going in the right direction generally, with the remainder saying that they felt that things were kind of off on the wrong track. Noting that those who are opposed to levies or who voted no in the past are more likely to feel that things are going off on the wrong track versus those who are in favor of levies are more likely to feel that things are going in the right direction. We also allowed them to provide some suggestions for improvement. It was a free-form, open-ended question that they were able to write in comments, and they did an overwhelming, we had lots of very, very extensive comments that we received. These are then categorized into sentiments, which are represented here. Top comments were surrounding sidewalks and pedestrian safety improvements with over one in five mentioning something having to do with this. A better city management and physical responsibility was the second most common with 11%, public safety at 9%, new services at 8%, and road maintenance at 8% is tied there. And these are some representative comments. These are actual comments that were given within the survey. The next area we'll explore is priorities. We gave them a list of different priorities that the city is responsible for, everything from public safety and emergency management onto court services. When we asked them to rank them from one to nine, some individuals only ranked a few, some ranked all of them. Over here, you can see the percentage that said each of these were number one. So, 43% of the population said that public safety and emergency management is the number one priority. This bar chart represents the order of being stated one, two, or three. So, 72% said public work for at least one, two, or three. 69% said public safety, and then a lower percentage, but still strong at 41% of pedestrian safety. We can look at these as the top three priorities from the overall residents. The next part of the survey asked some general questions surrounding tax levies, taxes in general, exceptions, I'm sorry, exemptions, et cetera. We looked for an agreement scale. Scale here is represented on the right by those who agree with the statement and on the left with those who disagree. If you add these up, it won't add up to 100 because we did allow for a neutral response, which is not shown on these graphs. So, in general, individuals agree that it is important to provide property tax exemptions or reductions for low-income or disabled residents. Of note, I know that we all know that this is just sort of a given, but the overwhelming agreement does say that this is an important messaging that we need to remind individuals of that property tax levy and levy exemptions are available for those in these categories. 68% agreed that occasional property tax increases are essential for maintaining and improving city services into the future. This is a strong level of agreement. Only 18% disagreed with this statement. 57% agreed that they believe that an increase in the amount of property taxes would have a positive impact on community safety and quality of life, and only 27% disagreed. And also over here, you'll see some notes with some differences as well, where you can see generally individuals with lower incomes felt one way versus those who with higher incomes potentially felt another way. Reasonable property tax increases make living in Lake Forest Park more desirable. 56% agreed with that statement. And 42% agreed that they trust the city will use any additional tax revenue responsibly for community projects. 32% disagree. So, this is definitely an area of concern. It's much more of a mixed sort of, sort of response. And will something that we would recommend definitely addressing with any future communications, particularly if a levy were to be decided upon. A couple more statements. This particular one here is despite the city council's efforts to raise revenue, I believe the city should still explore further funding sources before considering a property tax increase. We do see a fair level of agreement here. So, this certainly will be something that will need to be addressed very clearly if a levy were to be pursued. Also, and this is another one where it gives us some very clear direction, 61% agree that the city has not, at least in the past, clearly communicated with residents on topics such as reason for property tax increases and how that additional revenue will be used. So, again, some very clear agreement there. And then this final statement was actually a negative statement, though I just want to make sure it's cleared, clearly understood. Statement said, I don't believe the city services I use would benefit from additional funding. So, actually, what we're looking here for is people disagreeing with this statement. And 52% did disagree with 27% agreeing with the statement. Speaking about the 2021 levy proposal, 77% were aware of it, with 23% not aware of it. Either they didn't remember it, or they were potentially not living in the city at the time. Of those that were aware of it, 90, actually, we have to, we have to back out this percentage of it. So, actually, let me, let's just concentrate on this number up here. 42% confidently said they voted for it. 31% confidently said they voted against it, and the remainder either did not remember, said they didn't vote, couldn't recall, et cetera. This is one area that I know we had a little bit of discussion about this, and it looks from these results that levy would have passed because more said they voted for it than against it. Oftentimes, though, what we do see here is individuals who did vote for it, yes, they're very confident of it. They answer very, very specifically. A lot of those who didn't vote for it or voted against it don't really remember, or don't want to say, they're not sure, maybe have changed their mind, and of which they maybe would have voted for it. And so, that's why we are seeing that number lower. Again, we are confident in the result as they stand today, but we do know that there obviously is a difference from what actually happened in 2021. What's important, though, to understand this is it's important to look at how individuals maybe have shifted. And we do see some individuals who say they voted against it, but now are open to considering a levy. We'll get into that in a moment. Those who voted in favor of the 2021 levy did so because they felt the services were necessary for themselves in the community. There was also a specific focus on wanting pedestrian safety improvements and a disappointment that the levy didn't pass and those improvements did not come to pass, or that they felt that the taxes were just necessary for the city to operate. So, again, this was a free-form question. We asked individuals why they voted yes, and the top reason was because they saw that those were needed for the community and they care about others. For those who were opposed to the 2021 levy and said they voted against it, the number one reason why is they just didn't see a match between the city's priorities and their priorities. They mistrusted city management. They weren't sure if money would be used in a way that they felt was appropriate and last specifics. And so, and then also another major reason why they said they voted against it was because it was permanent rather than temporary. That was specifically called out. 17% said that was the reason why they voted against it, a tie with distrusting council management in general. This next question is kind of similar to the last question, and it was really asking about why they thought the levy didn't pass. This chart here was showing the responses of those who actually voted for it. For those who voted for it, felt it didn't pass because of lack of information. It was too broad, and it needed more transparency. The idea of it being permanent was not something that was called out by those who voted in favor of it. Only 8% mentioned it. Then, when you look at those who voted against it, you see a much higher percentage that say it was because it was permanent. So, certainly, this was a barrier to passing it in 2021, but also just lack of specifics as to how the money was going to be used and why it was needed is another major barrier as to why residents did not feel it passed. Remaining of my slides, I will be going, looking specifically in a potential new possible levy. And we presented this first as sort of general, there's a budget shortfall, and how would you prioritize various things? The number one area that is prioritized in the number one statement as far as what we were testing to see what might resonate with residents for reasons why there should be a levy was maintaining the current police force, particularly hiring new police officers. That was the one part of it that resonated much more strongly. Replacing aging patrol vehicles did not resonate as strongly, and so, actually, in hindsight, we kind of wish we would have split the statement because there was much stronger support, the idea of hiring and keeping police talent, and much less support for the idea of replacing patrol vehicles. Many people noted that 100,000 miles is not that many for the vehicles that are made today. They're made to last much longer. Another strong priority was hiring a grant rider to help the city secure additional external funds to support vital products and projects. This was also highly supported. Then finally, improving and maintaining the city's parks to ensure they remain accessible and well-used by the community was also widely seen as important, at least somewhat, if not very important. Expanding sidewalk installations and improvement to enhance pedestrian safety is a little polarizing. There are many people that are very passionate about this, particularly around schools. But then there are some portion of the population, 26% of the population to be exact, that don't feel that they want more sidewalks. They see that as but taking away from some of the livability and some of the more rural characteristics that the city has been able to maintain despite the amount of growth around it. The remaining things were more polarizing, although there is some support for the Clean Water Act, but it certainly is not as supported as things like keeping police talent or the federal projects that surround traffic management or city parks. Two things that did not resonate so much with residents was the idea that Lake Forest Park currently has got a lower tax rate than similar cities. So, we tested to see if that was something that residents would get behind. And although 46% said, yeah, that might be important, almost the same number, 33%. That's too high of a number to see not supporting it, who suggests that this should be a message that should be going out there. And then finally, hiring climate manager was not something that the city resident feels should be our priority at this time. This data here is looking at those who oppose the six-year levy, so the temporary levy, so individuals who, without any specifics, were saying, no, at this time, I could not support even a temporary levy, looking at what they feel is important. It's important to understand particularly things that are going to resonate with them. So, if a levy were to go forward, we could message these particular items very heavily. Again, maintaining the current police talent is the number one area that even those who oppose the levy, you see a great deal of value, followed by improving this and maintaining the city's parks. In terms of support, in total, three-fifths support the idea of a six-year temporary levy and a quarter oppose it. And that's shown here. This is in total. Strongly support is up here in green, and then somewhat support in the lighter green for a total of 62% of support. There's a 13% unsure, and then 25% oppose. And then you can see how this splits out on the right-hand side among those who voted yes and those who voted no in 2021 of subsegments. As expected, overwhelming support among those who supported it in 2021 and more moderate, but still some support among those who did not. We tested various level, levels of the levy, sorry, and we looked at three different levels, a 3 cents, a 45 cents, and a 60 cents. And so, obviously, the level of support goes down as that amount increases. 72% would support a 30 cent increase. 56% at this time would support a 45% increase, and then only 37% would support a 60% increase. 22% would not support at all. And then there are some differences, mostly of surrounding income with those with lower incomes not supporting the higher rates as often. Reasons why it would be supported among those who would support a proposed temporary level levy at all, at any level, is that they would suggest that they really do need to see a detailed purpose and itemized spend plan. This will help them decide how to vote. They also like to see specific impact if it passes or if it is rejected, and then transparency. Again, this was an open-ended, free-form question, asking them, what do you need in order to decide how to vote? And this is among those who already support the proposed levy. So, that's why the answers, some of them are very detailed, some of them are more general. Overall, they want very detailed, specific, and clear communication on how the money is going to be spent and how it will benefit the city. Same question was asked of those who opposed the proposed levy, what they would need to see in order just to make their final decision. And again, the most common response of what they want to see is a very detailed and itemized spend plan, followed by transparency. They also talked a little bit about why they would not support. So, there, of course, is part of that response. They don't even need any more information. They've already made their decision. There is a great deal of openness to more information that would potentially change their mind, with 42% saying if they had a detailed purpose and itemized spend plan, that would help them make their final decision. Finally, we asked a question about how they stay informed about city services, and they generally say through newsletters and mail received at home is their preferred method. So, 84% said that was one of their preferred methods. They were able to say multiple things. They also look at the city website, city emails, and city social media posts. And at that, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Benning. Appreciate your presentation. There's a lot to digest there. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Benning. Mr. Lebo.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Can you describe, or have you in any way accounted for what I'll call bias to the survey as those that have generally or did support the 2021 levy? Meaning, did we get all those people that were in favor of it, and we don't get the people that are opposed to it responding? So, you may be missing the silent majority, and silent minorities can come back and give you a result that you hadn't thought was going to occur because you have all this positive data, when in fact, the silent majority is actually telling you something different.
That's a great question, and certainly something that is in the forefront of any polling conversation based on some of the conversations that we have, particularly in the 2016 election. And then, of course, in subsequent, there certainly is a silent majority. And I think where we would see that, not necessarily a silent majority, there is a silent segment. And where we would see that, though, really is.
The reason I mentioned silent majority is that most of the people who voted, voted against the levy.
Right, exactly.
And yet, what we see is that most of the respondents voted for it.
Right. That's why right here, that 42% that's, so we say the majority of them, and 31% said against it. So, even, yes, there is definitely some, there is some slant here, although, at the same time, there is a very strong group of individuals who are against this, and this is a way for them to communicate that, this vehicle. So, we certainly saw 31, you know, 31% here. Even if you said, all right, we know that 42%, I mean, the actual percentage was about 40, 60, correct, in the 2021 voting? I think so. With 60% voted against it and 42, 40% voted for it.
So, does that mean that we're missing 30% of those who voted against it in the survey?
No, it does not, because there's 18% who say they did not recall and 9% who said they did not vote, but they probably did. These are individuals who are potentially being, being silent about the way that they voted. I do believe that they still responded to the survey. And that is why you see some, some shift here of individuals who said that maybe they voted against it are now saying that they would vote for it. So, I do think that those individuals are being represented. Absolutely. I, I just think that this is where we are not seeing some accuracy. I think they're saying, they're choosing not to answer this question because they don't want to say they voted against it. But they are winnable in the sense that they are, they're willing to consider it.
Because we're riddled.
I think in the same vein, I think what can, what, what might concern me with these numbers is they wouldn't respond because they're never going to change their mind, and they've already established that regardless of what we propose, which is a little, I mean, it's hard to tell with these numbers, right? But it does, it does make, it's great that we know what we know from these numbers, but it's, it's always hard to tell what we don't know from people who did not respond. I will say that the percentage of response was ginormous when it comes to doing these sort of statistical surveys. So, that gives me more confidence in this than, you know, people did obviously get the survey. They obviously found ways to fill out the survey. It was, it was not inaccessible because we saw such a high turnout. But it does, there is, again, that question, you know, why didn't they respond to the survey if we knew most people, you know, were able to find in their mailbox?
Oh, the, yeah, that, so we had 17% respond, so that, yeah, we do have 83% that did not respond. And, and are those people who did not respond skewed towards those who are going to vote no for the levy? We cannot be 100% confident in that. But again, individuals who strongly feel either way, either for or against it, are the most likely to respond. The individuals who don't respond are most likely the individuals that are on the fence, who don't feel passionately one way or the other. And without a very clear, strong messaging plan, those will put the individuals that will be, end up voting against it. I think that that's what that tells us, is that there's this group of individuals who are on the fence, and we, and we have to reach them, but we don't have very much information about them, unfortunately. We only have this information of those who are against it and then those who are for it. But then I would really kind of lean heavily into this slide here and looking at, so this slide here is looking at what those who are open and honest about the fact that they are against it, what they prioritize.
Vice Sheriff Tony, and then Deputy Merbode had her hand up after that.
Right. And thank you, Ms. Benning, for a wonderful presentation. I have a completely neutral question, which is, of all the surveys, do you, did you break down how many of the ones that were returned were, were the ones in Spanish?
I will get that specific answer to you. I don't have that off the top of my head. It was very, very low, under 10, but I will get the specific response.
And were there any comments, and were there any comments about whether the, any other languages that have been represented?
There were no comments regarding that. The only accessibility comments that we got were individual The only accessibility comments that we got were individuals who were unable to fill it out either, either written or online, in which case they called us and they completed the survey over the phone.
That's great to hear, thank you. Deputy Merbode.
Yes, can you hear me?
You bet.
Okay, great. I've, I've been having some Zoom problems, so I just wanted to check. I think I'm, I've got it under control now. I wanted to say thank you, Chelsea, for an excellent presentation. I think we got a pretty thorough and nuanced response from our citizens. I, I do want to say, I think that we had a high level of engagement with that level of return. I, I wanted to put it in the context, we've done other surveys recently and it's been a wonderful tool for finding out what our community is thinking. We've done it on land use issues, we've done it on parks issues and we've done it on climate action issues. And so I think that while there can be some skewing, the fact that we have some very strong no people in our community who, who may be persuadable or not, depending on what it is. I, I think this gives us just very useful information because the consistency on what people would want to see for a levy lid lift is strong. And the consistency on the city's priorities for action is strong. So I feel we have a lot of nuance in here, but a lot of excellent information as we have a discussion about whether we want to pursue a levy lid lift going forward. But I just wanted to mention this in the context of those other surveys. We've been, we've been using this tool, this is the most sophisticated version yet. And, and in general, the sentiment of our, our citizens have not been shy in retiring, to be honest, on sharing their views with us. So thank you for a very timely and thorough presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, thanks. I want to come back to data. Did you do any sort of weighting when it came to demographics?
Yes, we did. And in the full presentation, which if you don't have, I'm happy to make sure that you do. We have a detailed slide that goes over that. We used five-year estimates from the ACS and we did weighting on age, gender and income to match the population of your specific area.
Okay, so just to confirm that the, the graphs that are in this presentation are after the weighting, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good, because I, I wanted to check that because it did seem that the survey respondents skewed more wealthy homeowner and seniors compared to the LFP general population. I still have some concerns about, you know, I, I looked it up, it was actually sixty-five, thirty-five against the previous levy. So considering a thirty-point margin against the previous levy versus a ten-point margin in favor of the previous levy, that still feels like a really big miss, so it gives me some pause. I, I guess that's not really a question, I suppose, but it's, it's a concern I have just because that should be a factual benchmark.
Yeah, absolutely. So just two, just points of clarification, but I do absolutely understand and, and agree with that it is certainly something that we have to dissect. It was weighted to the voting population, which does skew older and more affluent, as opposed to your raw population in Lake Forest Park. And then regarding the, the second very, very true sort of comment is, why are we seeing such a low number who are stating that they voted against it? And does that mean that there's a population out there that is just not responding for whatever reason? You know, again, it, it was three years ago. And the, the survey did have a cover sheet which went over, you know, sort of the position that the, the city is currently in. It also did make it very clear, most of the individuals, you know, had the written survey, they were able to, you know, go ahead and, and understand that this was a temporary levy, which was a major barrier to the, the past one. There is a possibility also that some who actually voted against it had already decided that they were open to it or possibly even would have voted for it. So they opted to say, I just don't remember how I voted, or I didn't vote. Or maybe even that I voted for it when I really didn't vote for it. The surveys can only measure where people are in today's point in time. It is very, very difficult to ever measure past behavior, especially three years ago.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any other questions for Ms. Bennigan? Councilman Lebo, please.
I, I want to come back to, based, because this isn't a really important thing, is that if, and this is, two thousand and twenty-one was not the first time we had a levy failure in Lake Forest Park. And there's this concern that people, how are you really adjusting for what I'll call the positive bias? We have a, an affluent community here, that many people are willing to support increases for services. But there's also a segment of the population, just somewhere else, that doesn't support these kinds of levies. And how do you account for what appears to be a strong positive bias when in fact it was a two-to-one no vote? I mean, are, are, are people who voted no more likely to forget that they voted no than those who voted yes? And I, I, that's a rhetorical comment.
Yeah, I mean, that, and it's a, but it's a fair one, absolutely. You, you know, there, there may be a, a positive bias in this. Certainly, we do not want to go out and ask for something that we know that the, that the city is not going to support. Now, also do remember that twenty-three percent of the entire population said they weren't even aware of the two thousand and twenty-one levy. Now, I, I would say that, you know, that's probably accurate. Or they may have been aware of it, but they forgot about it. There's been a lot of, of things that have changed since two thousand and twenty-one. And people's situations have changed dramatically since two thousand and twenty-one, possibly in either direction. I mean, that could actually affect it a, a great deal. But we do have a, you know, almost a fourth of the voting population who says that, yes, I will be voting in two thousand and twenty-five, that don't even remember the twenty-one levy. That is a great opportunity, but it's also a very risky sort of population because we have no idea how that population may end up going.
Right, because what, what wasn't asked was, did you vote in the two thousand and twenty-one election in Lake Forest Park? Because not everyone who responded to this lived in Lake Forest Park in two thousand and twenty-one.
Exactly, yes. So we only asked if they were aware of it, and then of those who are aware of it, we asked if they voted.
So I think for me, the, looking at the age brackets of the respondents gives us an insight into those that were engaged in responding to the survey, you know, in our packet, I think it's page nine. The thirty-five to sixty-four age brackets are fifteen, eighteen percent of the, but then you see a big peak at the, over sixty-five. And so I think the question is, for me, is as we move forward in wondering what our community wants, is really reaching out to those folks who, you know, haven't given us their opinion through this survey because of whatever reasons they weren't high respondents in here. Does that sound like a reasonable assumption to make from this data? Chelsea?
Um, it, it is, I do, just though, I do remember that the, there is a difference between your population and your registered voter population. And your registered voter population does skew older. So the numbers that you're looking at on the slide that's currently up match the population, the age population of the voting population in, in your city, because they were weighted to be that. So, and what I mean by weighted, we adjusted for the lower response rates among the, the younger individuals. And, and all the proportions that you see are adjusted. So somebody who was thirty-five to forty-four got more weight in the overall than, than those who were an older population. And to follow that, the younger populations are much less likely to have voted in two thousand and twenty-one or even to have lived in Lake Forest Park in two thousand and twenty-one, which might also be part of the reason why we are seeing that skew, because they are giving more, they've been given more weight in these results. I, I totally understand the, the reluctance to believe what could otherwise be seen as some really positive results, that there is some openness to supporting this levy, at least at the lower levels. But at the same time, I'm very confident that this data is balanced to the population. There is work to be done, I certainly wouldn't want to lead you otherwise, but I do think it is a winnable levy.
Yeah, and I think, not questioning the balance of the, the data that you provided, but simply the, the turnout just helps us understand who we need to reach out to as representatives of this community, because we do represent all those folks.
Absolutely.
Colleagues, other questions for Ms. Bennigan? Please, Councilmember Gold.
Yes, I have a comment too. And looking at the, those who support, supported the levy primarily and then comparing it with the people that didn't or that opposed it, it seems a very high percentage of both groups are asking for a detailed purpose and an itemized spend plan. And so probably, this is accurately representing the people that live here now, that if they had their questions answered with the detailed purpose and itemized spend plan of what, you know, what the money is going to be used for and what has the city done to trim the existing budget. It looks to me that there, you might get a bigger swing of the people that voted no to voting yes if there was a better explanation.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate the comment, other comments or questions for Ms. Bennigan. Well, thank you very much, Chelsea, an excellent presentation, colleagues.
Um, will we get a copy of the full report?
She said she could send it to us.
Absolutely.
I emailed the full report to council almost two weeks ago. If you haven't seen it, I can resend that.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Bennigan, I, just a couple of quick thoughts. If you want to hang your hat on things, folks, besides a lot of data here, which is really instructive, the four out of five believe things in Lake Forest Park are going in the right direction. Hats off to you all for that number. I know it's all due to your huge lifts you've been doing over the last few years. Sidewalks and pedestrian safety, these are the top suggested improvement. That's another thing that I think that clearly we've, we've been focused on. And the other thing too, fundamentally and foundationally here, the response rate was staggering, in my opinion. It shows that people are very engaged. Previous surveys have been, to my recollection, less than one-third of the level of responsiveness as this one. So people are interested and we need to make sure that they are informed about the steps that you choose to take as a body. So there's a lot of good information here and I know we'll be digesting it for weeks. So thank you very much, Ms. Bennigan, we really appreciate your efforts and joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, have a great night.
You as well, have a great evening.
Bye-bye.
Okay, folks, we're going to move on to the consent calendar, an entertaining motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Moving to the second, any discussion about the consent calendar? Here none that's adopted by unanimous consent, thank you, everybody. We're moving on to ordinances and resolutions for introduction refer or slash referral, excuse me. Administrator Hill is going to introduce Resolution twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-five dash two zeros or four declaring certain assets, assets as surplus for disposition through a direct sale or public auction. Mr. Hill, thank you.
And January fourteenth was when I sent the email, so it's just been over a week, so check your inboxes, I can resend that. Before you tonight is an introduction on the surplus of five vehicles that we have within police and public works. If you want to look at page one oh eight of your packet, you'll notice that those five vehicles, three of those are patrol vehicles. Well, two are patrol vehicles, one serves as the K-nine vehicle. The two patrol vehicles have been replaced, those are the new Tahos that we have. And then the K-nine vehicle is being replaced through the foundation and that is on order. The two vehicles within Public Works are extremely old vehicles. One is a nineteen ninety-six Jeep Cherokee. And then one is a nineteen ninety-seven International Dump Truck. Some information that I got on those two vehicles today is, well, I already knew this on the dump truck, it should be used as a farm truck only.
Phil, can we update, I think we have a different packet numbering for, perhaps when we had the, so I've got it, I think, on page one.
It's on the second page of the agenda cover.
Yes, I think it's one, page one thirty in my packet.
I just downloaded mine.
It's a new, it was updated, there was, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, so on the second page of this, this item. So we have the Jeep Cherokee and the International. Those values, I'm not sure how well those are going to hold up. So these are, we, James G. Murphy Auctioneers, we send that, I sent them the information, they provide us the values they think will get at auction. The International Truck should not be used for anything but a farm truck. I found out today that the Jeep Cherokee has some safety issues that Nut is worried about, so I'm not sure how well those two values will hold up. And one thing I also want to point out is that city may not set reserves. And so if these only sell for fifteen hundred dollars at auction, we only get fifteen hundred dollars for any individual vehicle. Resolution six twelve provides the process for disposal surplus, property other than real estate, the value of these requires council action. And then any funds that come out of the sale, these vehicles would be collected and remitted to the fleet replacement fund. And that's what I've got for you tonight, and take any questions. We're not asking you to take action on this because I think this is probably for this council, the first time we brought surplus before you, so. Except for maybe Councilmember Red.
Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill? Councilmember Goldman?
Yes, um, yeah, this seems interesting. My question is, do these auctions tend to have a good turnout? And I guess the reason I'm asking is, you know, if these are vehicles that we don't want, they're old, they're too old for us or too unsafe or obsolete, does anybody want them?
Um, I have not used this auction house here. I've used previous auction houses for vehicles in worse shape than this and they've all sold usually, you know, for two or three thousand dollars. The market is ripe for used vehicles and, and these vehicles aren't going to die tomorrow. It's a different use, a, a police car versus, you know, somebody's daily commuter. This probably would serve people well and at a dollar value that's actually, you know, affordable. So I would think they would go pretty quickly. Except for maybe the last two, the International and the Jeep, I'm not sure.
Councilor Riddle.
This, this thought just occurred to me, so I haven't thought it through very much, but is there any possibility of donating these to any of our partners? And is that something that we have a policy around or no?
Chief actually asked me that question because we, we, we don't have a partner, but there is a, there's an adjacent partner that might be interested. That would require a separate action by council and we would have to check into that. I want to make sure that it's not a nonprofit, so it might be a gift of public funds, we'd have to go down that with the city attorney. We also can sell these, you know, to designated buyers. We actually have an employee who's interested in the Jeep, but I have concern now that we're going to want to do a little bit more due diligence before they go making an offer to the city. Obviously, we pay a ten percent commission, so we do some adjustment of price there if an employee wanted to buy something.
Okay. So those aren't necessarily off the table is what we're looking at here, but they haven't been fully vetted, okay.
Colleagues, that's really good.
I think exploring the, the option to offer them for a direct sale prior to going to an auction would be better because a lot of times those auctions, like you mentioned, they don't go for a lot.
Yeah, and there's no reserve and so.
Right, exactly. So I mean, it may be, maybe putting an advertisement out for them, I don't know what the rules would be, but try it first.
Yeah. A lot of times if there are other agencies that, that want to pick up an old vehicle, that's, that's where you get those sales, but.
Colleagues, other questions for Administrator Hill? Okay, thank you.
This will come back to you at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Hearing no questions, I'd probably bring it back and ask you to waive the three-touch rule to declare the surplus and then we, we proceed.
Make sure you get the squirrels up first.
One, one quick question.
Yes, please.
Is there, is there any concerns that you have with our current policy that you would want us to look at, because I noticed this resolution's from quite some time ago?
No, it actually.
It'll hold up.
It actually works quite well, it has, there's a, a low level, I think anything under three thousand dollars I can approve. And then there's a threshold for the mayor and then anything above that threshold has to go to council. And we have, we've surplus some IT equipment in the past, it had no value. Our IT manager reached out and got value on it, you know, these were decades-old equipment, kind of like, let me give you a little history on the nineteen ninety-seven International Dump Truck. That was replaced in two thousand and fifteen by another International Dump Truck. And for whatever reason, as we've gone through this, found that the ninety-seven was just kept and never disposed of. So that hurts your fleet fund, that, that should have been disposed of back in, you know, ten Um, so that hurts your fleet fund. That that should have been disposed of back in, you know, ten years ago and was just held on to. And so we we try and stay on top of these types of things. So our Public Works superintendent's been going through equipment, as you remember, in this. I think it was in twenty-three, Public Works went and bought some new equipment, electric equipment, battery operated equipment, start moving away from greenhouse gas emitting, you know, mowers and trimmers and things like that. He's now going through and going, and we still have all this old equipment. And so he will take that to James G. Murphy, get values on it if it's of a threshold, the mayor can sign, otherwise that will come to council as well for being declared surplus. But yeah, it it works well. We haven't run into any problems with it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thanks very much, Phil. Moving on to Resolution twenty-five, two thousand and five, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Printwest for quarterly newsletter printing and mailing services. Clerk McLean is joining us. Thank you, Matt. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fortunately, this is one of those items that you haven't seen before. Usually, we print the newsletter through Lithocraft. They were bought out by Printwest. And because of inflation, now we're bringing the contract to you because it's over thirty thousand dollars. Last year, we spent with postage on the newsletter about a little over eighteen thousand dollars just on the newsletter. That's why this contract is written to be up to forty thousand dollars. And we do have a newsletter that's coming out in March, so time is of the essence to get this signed. So is there any questions?
Councilor Riddle.
Um, so this is the same company, different name, different price. Has there been an interest in seeing if other companies are more competitive or is this because we're kind of?
It's because of the time crunch. It kind of caught us a little bit by surprise. If we did go out, we'd probably have to do another RFP for it. And that would mean that the spring newsletter would probably not go out.
It, was there any discussion of like a one-year contract would give us the time to do some due diligence on this?
We could do a one-year contract, sure.
Thank you for.
Councilmember Goldman.
Yes, thanks. A two-part question. The first part, what is our practical deadline to sign the contract in order to get the spring newsletter out on time?
Um, I'm sure I could work to nagle it so they would do the spring newsletter. But they probably want us to do it before the end of March, to be sure.
And overall, are we generally happy with the services that we've gotten so far?
Uh, we've been extremely happy with the service. I mean, I'm sure everyone's seen the newsletter, so there hasn't been any complaints about it.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, other questions? Councilor Lebo?
Do you recall if the twenty twenty-one contract was competitive?
Competitive with other companies?
Well, competitive process or was it simply contracted because?
It was just a carryover from uh, thing we've been using them for. Oh, I don't know.
I mean, the question is, have we just rolled their contract over? Since, you know, did we have a country? When was the last time we actually went out and requested proposals?
That was before me, so I don't know.
I would be supportive of a one-year so that we could put out a competitive.
Alex, what's your?
I agree.
Okay, reasonable. Any other questions for Mr. McLean? I'm sorry, I start for a time.
Thank you, and thank you for outlining this. Obviously, from the previous survey, the newsletter is a significant source of information for our residents, so I am in favor of the one-year as opposed to basically just continuing our usual cycle. Question I have is completely irrelevant to that. Question I have is, do you know if if this new, because they bought it, it's now a union shop or are they still non-union?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
Certainly find out. Councilmember Good.
I have a separate side note comment. The city of Kenmore has a newsletter that they put out and it includes advertisements from local vendors. And I'm wondering, does this firm have the capacity to manage vendors?
No, uh, the newsletter in Kenmore is actually produced in-house at the city of Kenmore, and they actually have dedicated staff for it. So everything comes to them. They just send it out to get printed and sent out.
Is is there any way to see how much money that they make from their advertisements and what it and how it compensates for those people? To see if it's worth it?
I can ask, yes.
Could, yeah, that'd be great. Because I, you know, it might be a source of revenue for the city to maybe pay for a dedicated person to do all this print work. And then to also, you know, get some revenue with advertisements, because it's a really good, it's a good publication. People ask me, well, how, why don't we do something like that?
That's because of staff.
Exactly.
We don't have the staff capacity to do it. We still produce everything for the newsletter in-house. We just send it to them to print and mail out.
But if you had this, if you had the supportive income from ads, I'm, that's why I'm asking for the cost to see if there was a way to get you a person.
We can try.
Thank you. Any other questions for?
I guess. The timing on this, do you need us to move something for you now?
No.
Okay, good, okay.
Because it's becoming a one-year contract. It actually falls underneath the purchasing policy, so we can just have the mayor sign that directly.
You're welcome.
That's just, thank you, Mr. McLean. Really appreciate your help there. Just quickly, as a side note, I guess I'm getting long in the tooth, but we did actually discuss the question of advertising many, many years ago through the Economic Development Commission, which is no longer in no longer stood up. And they had challenges finding a way to make the revenues work to offset the staff costs. So outsourcing it is is quite essential, but an excellent, excellent, excellent thought. Councilmember, good. Moving on, we're on to council discussion and action. Update on funding for the fortieth place. Roundabout Administrator Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to direct you to page two of the agenda cover. I don't know what page that is in your packet. We've had several, several discussions on this project. And the last time that Project Manager Phillips reported to you, obviously you're aware that the project cost now is seven million twenty-eight thousand dollars. We've been working to fill those gaps. On this page, you'll see the Transportation Improvement Board grant, the Wash dot grant, which came through legislative allocation, Transportation Capital Fund, that is our REIT two fund. So those are city dollars. Lake Forest Park Water District has some skin in the game because of relocation of some of their facilities. They're paying us to do the work or our contractors. The Public Works Board loan that you approved for the two million dollars. And then what we've discussed previously with you is Transportation Improvement Board contingency, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, one eight hundred and eighty dollars. This is something that their executive director just at his level can approve. We've had discussions with him. He is supportive of the project. That leaves us with a gap of about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Last time we spoke with you, there was some consideration of going to the Transportation Improvement Board and requesting this additional funding. We found out through this, through the end of twenty twenty-four, due to budgetary constraints, the fact that our project is now considered a delayed project in their eyes. The executive director between those two factors is not confident that we would receive the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that if we did go to the board and ask for it, his contingency fund could be at jeopardy as well. And so what we're asking tonight is consideration of using traffic safety funds to fill the six hundred and sixty thousand dollar gap and not roll the dice on on losing potentially the contingency fund through TIB. One thing I would also note is we are working with our legislative lobbyists to make a request through Senator Stanford and Representative Dorr for seven hundred thousand dollars to close out this project. So if we were to get that allocation, then we wouldn't need to spend the six hundred and sixty thousand out of the Traffic Safety Fund. But if we do not, this is the only way that we have found that we could close this project out funding-wise and actually construct supposed to be this summer, that we would begin complete construction in twenty twenty-seven. So I'm here to ask for some direction. Then we'll move forward with that.
Colleagues, questions for Mr. Hill? Just going on the rocker, please, Councilmember.
Um, so the the six hundred and sixty thousand is would cover like the pedestrian safety aspects of the, have you done the numbers to?
So a roundabout is a pedestrian safety improvement. It would qualify. We could go out and do projects like this all day long if if the funds were there out of that. And so, yeah, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars is a small amount of this project. We have the ramp improvements, the crosswalks, the improvements tying into the other walkways around there. So, yeah, it's definitely it makes that criteria, absolutely.
And and what do we have in that fund right now? How much do we have in the fund?
Um, through the end of the year, you remember there were a lot of fits and starts with the Office of the Courts, et cetera, and pivoting in about two and a half months' time, maybe three months' time. There's just over about four hundred and forty thousand dollars that rolled into that fund. I'm not sure that's a total final number. But we are seeing consistency in traffic citations. Are you raising your hand? About four seventeen was what it was for that that short period of time at the end of twenty twenty-four.
So this, this would require some additional funds to come into.
Uh, they're coming in every day. And and this this could be last dollar spent, obviously.
Okay.
And with a twenty twenty-seven completion date, you know, maybe we, if we didn't get any money from legislature, make another run in in twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
There, there's always opportunities to ask for money, but this would need to be our backstop.
Select solidify it as a fully funded project to allow us to move.
So we could actually take it out to bid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarifications.
Councilor Lebo.
So thank you for the presentation. I am supportive based upon the recommendation not to seek the additional funding from the TIB. Uh, but otherwise would put the three hundred and eighty-four thousand in jeopardy. I am also supportive of using the general fund O two, the Traffic Safety Fund for the residual. Remind me of the two million dollars for the Public Works Board loan. What was our revenue for paying off that loan?
That is the additional funds that you raised in the Transportation Benefit District when you made it a fifty-dollar charge instead of forty. And then you also had the sales tax that you implemented. There is, and this was a previous presentation. Sufficient funds to make the debt service for two million dollar loan at the interest rate that we got.
Would we now have any option to use the general fund O two, Traffic Safety, to pay that loan back?
Absolutely. I mean, it's
Okay.
Yeah, you, one or the other.
Uh, so what what is the timing for advertising? And the reason I'm asking is that do we have a policy that we have a fully funded project before we advertise? And while we're asking, the shortfall is about six sixty and we think we have about four seventeen. And as a policy, we should have a means of paying for the the residuals so that when we advertise, we in fact have a fully funded project rather than a hope for a fully funded project.
And we could look at what the revenues have come in to date, you know, January. There, there's a lag. We also have some additional funds in our Transportation Benefit District that we could look at. But, yeah, we could get that math together.
So remind me, what's the timeline for advertisement?
Um, the advertisement was supposed to be in February. We have run into, we've been running into issues, honestly, with the the state on some, and Seattle City Light. I think we're at a point where those aren't going to hold up bidding the project. But there could be a hurdle later in the project if we resolve this.
So before we advertise, I'd like to see that we have a fully funded project.
We can get that to you.
Uh, just from, I come from a background that we never advertise unless you have the money.
Yep.
Okay.
Councilor Goldman.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So my question is, how confident are you that the total cost is going to be seven million? As opposed to escalating further?
As confident as that. As much confidence as we have in our engineers. There has been a lot of escalation, a lot of that, you know, has been, as we've discussed in the past, very early estimates were not well-grounded. There have been changes in our own code as well as in the storm code. Also, the asphalt in that initial estimate was, the new asphalt was way underestimated, which then, as when it was correctly estimated, required the storm vault, which had a significant increase. So we feel pretty comfortable that it is dialed in and it shouldn't go above here, but.
Okay, so.
If it does, I.
I mean, where I'm at is I recall when we were discussing the two million Public Works loan, we said that if we don't get this loan, you know, the, we can't afford the project. So this is going to be it. And now we're saying, okay, but just another six hundred and sixty thousand to bridge the gap. And there's, I am concerned about, let's say, hefty tariffs on neighboring countries escalating costs further. And so I'm just wondering, are we going to have a point where we just say, you know, we can't keep saying, okay, another couple of hundred thousand, another couple hundred thousand? Is there going to be a point where we just say enough is enough? And unfortunately, you know, we just have to put it on the shelf.
You may get there. I I do recall when we presented the two million dollar Public Works Board loan to council, there was still some we still weren't confident of this extra six hundred and sixty thousand dollars from TIB Board. It wasn't guaranteed at that time as well. That was, you know, something we would have to go and ask for. You know, if you get twenty percent tariffs and it affects this project, that's a serious discussion. That that could be huge. It would, I guess, would depend on what materials are affected by that and how much of it's in this project. And we'd have to evaluate at that point in time once those bids came in.
Thank you for the questions, colleagues. Any other questions for Mister Hill? I can chime in on a couple of data points here. If not, one relative to the O two fund, we're consistently seeing, I think over now, running average is about a hundred and twenty-two citations violations a day continuously, uh, which is unfortunate. We were hoping that numbers would drop dramatically. We are seeing, the good news is the speed has dropped, continues to drop. The latest number I had was twenty-three point two miles an hour in that zone, which is a very positive step. With respect to funding, I would say this is one of those places we really have to put a stake in the sand because the legislature is talking about gutting the former Public Works Trust Fund. We're not going to have additional opportunities for that. They're talking about taking a hundred and fifty million plus out of that, which means small jurisdictions like ourselves and water districts and et cetera are going to have very significant challenges in finding funding. The other thing I would say is while this project started out on, let's say erroneous data, uh, many years ago, we have pivoted. I don't think things have, think things have really changed significantly since Mister Hill came to you folks previously about the situation. My concern is if that we do not approve this as a group, or you do as a group, as a city, that are the confidence from the TIB and from other agencies is going to go down because they believe in the project and we need to be able to show we can execute. So that is my, my soapbox, soapbox pitch, if you will. None of us are happy about the costs. They're staggering and we're hearing this all over the state. And I know Deputy Rebodi can attest to that because she hears in the deputy mayor meetings all the time. The costs are staggering. Hopefully, we can get some stability in terms of costs going forward on other projects and eyes open, correct information about what the estimates are going to be, so we can, you know, make this, make these things work. And speaking of Deputy Mayor Bodie, there she is. Thank you for saving me.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to echo what you were saying, which is that uh, I think we have a strong interest in executing on this project absent some extraordinary increase in costs. I do think we have to, we have spent money uh, on this already and we have to move forward as best we can. I do think we have the best possible funding plan in hand. And as Councilmembers Goldman or Lebo indicate, if, if there are big jumps in costs for any reason, we can revisit it, but I strongly support moving ahead with this package in hand at this time.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Riddle.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I worry about backing away from this and in the reputation that comes from those sorts of maneuvers. In addition to the 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 funds that are already been sunk that we can't get back out. I also really believe in this project. There is, it's such a challenge to get across I also really believe in this project. There is, it's such a challenge to get across. That boundary line for our community and it's it's hard in a car. It's near impossible when you're walking. Unless you shut it down and have the police helping you get across. Something like this, which increases that pedestrian safety and allows. Uh, at least one place for us to be able to cross safely, I think is going to be critical to this community. The more that we want to connect and engage and draw people to the town center as a community hub. We're going to need projects like this and we've taken this one so far and there is a bit of a sunk cost, but I also feel like. It's a really important project for us to get done and with this new funding source uh to cover the six sixty. I want us to move forward. Um, and as quickly as prudent so that we don't, that we can start getting our prices uh fixed before prices go up. So I'm still fully behind this. I want to see it done. Uh, I want to see it done with this little escalation as humanly possible. So I'd I'd like for us as council to consider moving this as quickly as prudent. Not tonight, but as quickly as prudent so that we don't end up getting hit with those higher prices.
Thank you. Vice Chair for Tani and then Councilor Goldman.
Right, thank you. And uh, I appreciate the presentation and the update. The uh, I I guess my point is that having nearly been run off the road as a bicyclist there just the other day. Like, yes, this project cannot happen fast enough for me anyway. However, um, you know, we just, we shouldn't fall into the trap of this fallacy of sunk costs, right? I mean, the fact that we have already put some money into it should not have any bearing on if we need to revisit it. But that said, um, I'm very much in favor of uh moving forward with it. Procedurally, I was just wondering, do we take a formal vote or do you just need a head nod?
That's best for you can head nod good or go on a formal motion.
Councilor Goldman.
Yes, I'm just want to clarify my my earlier remarks. So I'm I'm fine with using the O two fund for the six hundred and sixty. And I would like to see this project bid as soon as possible because cynical me does think that prices are going to be escalating. Dramatically in the next several months. Um, if bids come in higher than seven million, um, I do think we need to revisit it. But for now, I am fine with using the six sixty to get us to a hundred percent funding to get bids out.
Right. Thank you, Councilor. Colleagues, other questions?
Uh, just not a question.
Please, Mr. Goldman.
I think it's important that we recognize for the public that we affirmatively do this more than just a head nod. So I would, I would move that we um acknowledge and agree that the additional funding of six sixty. Six hundred and sixty thousand is from the general fund traffic safety O two in support of the roundabout project.
So motion on the floor to.
I'll second them.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to um. Uh, approve that the traffic safety fund O two be utilized for the funding gap on the roundabout project. If any further discussion.
And the amount of six sixty.
And the amount of six, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, just one quick comment, reminder of the O two fund is a restricted fund, so this is an appropriate use. So, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any days. Yeah, I have it. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much, council. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Okay, um. Any other business, colleagues? Um, yeah, please.
I'd like to move to excuse uh Councilmember Saunders.
During a second. It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Saunders. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any days.
Nay.
The eyes have it. Uh, let the record reflect, it's five to one as usual. Thank you, colleagues. Always, never a dull moment. Um, council member reports, colleagues who has anything to bring to the table, Councilor Lebo.
Well, I just want to remark, um, Director Hoffman spoke about the planning commission and the update that he gave in our earlier meeting. And just echo that it was a really robust discussion on particularly trying to define the middle housing and how we respond to the state law for that. Um, there was quite a bit of discussion in terms of how far we should go. Uh, just the minimum, or can we, as Director Hoffman pointed out, explore opportunities to create incentives for increased density? And so, um. I was really pleased to see the level of discussion and I think it will be um really quite a tremendous. Uh, product that we're going to get from the planning commission that demonstrates that robust conversation. Uh, and thoughtfulness that they've put into every meeting and um the product that they give to us, so.
Thank you, Councilman Lebo. No, they're doing excellent work. Vice Chair, Vice Chair for Tani, we've started that.
Is this committee reports?
Uh, it can be either.
All right, thank you. Um, so I attended the RIA meeting uh two weeks ago. And uh, one of the thing, uh, great pieces of news that we got from the state is that there's now going to be not only a formal protocol for testing for six. P P D quinine in the waters, stream waters. And that's that chemical, you might recall, that does a big number on Soho uh coho salmon uh pre-spawn mortality. And uh, um, given that we're trying to restore our streams, this would be a fairly good thing for test for in our streams. But it's also got some funding on it as well. So stay tuned for the news.
Thank you, Vice Chair for Tani. Colleagues, any other, uh, I'm sorry, Councilor Goldman, please.
Thanks. Um, last night, the tree board met. Um, they continued their deliberations about exceptional trees and what uh potential modifications they'll be recommending. For which species can be protected as exceptional trees and what diameters are. Um, they're putting a lot of emphasis on making sure it's supported by data from the tree inventory. Um, as to what is being chosen. Um, also, and I might be stealing uh Director Hoffman's thunder on this. But uh, our urban forest planner applied for and received a seventy five thousand dollar grant from the Sustainable Forestry Initiative. Which we can use towards um supporting maintaining our urban forest.
Great.
Um, also last night, also in this building, uh, Councilmember Riddle and I attended an information session from the uh. North Shoreline, North Shore Fire Departments regarding the upcoming uh RFA. Um, so just wanted to remind people, I got a notice from King County that my ballot's in the mail as of today. And so that election's coming up in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any other questions or comments, updates, reports, snippets, please?
Yeah, I also forgot, uh, wanted to mention that I attended the uh NUSA annual meeting uh in Kenmore City Hall yesterday. And uh, one of our own citizens, uh, Celia Sodel was nominated for uh the activist of the year equivalent award.
Wonderful. Uh, Deputy Robodi, you have your hands up.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that in the wake of the L A fires. Uh, are some of our citizens, as well as citizens of other jurisdictions, have asked about. Our fire prevention plans. And uh, so I think down the road, uh, I don't know that we have a high risks uh scenario here. But uh, at some point, uh, we can engage that topic. I don't think it's urgent at this minute. But I'm just uh flagging it for um for the future. Uh, because uh, the situation in L A, I think, was not uh completely anticipated. So just uh that we we have gotten some inquiries from some of our citizens, as have other cities. Uh, about what our our plans are when uh when if if fire became a risk. Um, so I I think we are quite different from L A and Pacific Palisades. Uh, and so forth, but uh, it does bear some uh thought and conversation when we have a little breathing room in our schedule.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Riddle.
Yeah, and to follow up with uh on the deputy mayor's comment, there was a request uh of how the. Shoreline Fire Department is prepared for an urban wildfire. Uh, so uh, I won't try to repeat what the chief said, but if you're interested, it should be in the recording from last night's. Uh, Lake Forest Park Community Meeting. Uh, so he did start to address that. So I think it's a good jumping off point to have that conversation.
Right, thank you. Any other council member reports or committee reports? Uh, I'll just be very brief. Um, just to, some of you may have heard, King County Parks will be. Redeveloping all the intersections of the Berkhamon Trail um coming up this fall. We have preliminary designs that have been uh that our engineering team have commented on. Uh, nothing is finalized yet. Uh, we do deeply appreciate county's parks responsiveness to concerns about pedestrian safety. And crossing the Berkhamon Trail as well as pedestrian safety along the Berkhamon Trail. So, um. I, we really um appreciate that. A couple other things, Lakefront Park, as you know, Lakefront Property has. Structures have been demolished, fencing is in place, uh ecology blocks are there, no parking signs are there. Director Hoffman has been doing a magnificent job of navigating. How to make sure everything is in place and stabilized there at the property. Really appreciate that, Mark. Um, a lot of moving parts. So, um, I'm looking forward to seeing the foundations removed and other things. And as a reminder, our friend Councilmember Dombowski uh provided us five hundred thousand more capital dollars. Or uh improvements or, you know, construction on the property. So looking forward to seeing what we can do with that. Councilor Goldman.
Yes, uh, can I ask a follow up about the Burke Gilman?
Yes.
Does this include the intersection of the Burke Gilman, One Seventieth Street and Five Twenty Two, the one that's across from Starbucks?
It is, it is, yeah, it's the alignment outside of Wash Dot's zone, basically.
Uh, um, I would love to see the crosswalk button pole moved so that it's no longer in the middle of the Burke Gilman Trail. Because that is a pedestrian cyclist conflict.
Thank you very much for that because you have to walk across the trail in front of the cyclists to push the button. I, it's been a problem for a while. I just submitted a comment recently to the project manager about the size of the pedestrian plazas. Because people are at both this intersection and at One Seventieth. People don't use the crosswalk. They end up walking straight off the plaza, the shortest route possible. And end up, end up in between cars, which can be very, very hazardous. But um, we will absolutely make sure that that gets into the comments, uh, as well as the comments that were submitted by our engineering team. Um, see, what am I, so that's, oh, just a quick shout out. I know the chief will be this weekend at the Polar Bear Plunge. Shout out to our friends at Rotary. I will be there. I don't know that I'm going to have license to jump in the in the lake, but I will try. Chief will go in with his, with his uniform on, which is pretty impressive. So, um, I know Phil will be there, right, Phil? In his, in his dry suit, but um, anyway, I might, I might actually jump in this weekend. With that, we do have to move on to an executive session, but I did want to give this administrator Hill a chance to update anybody on his uh admin report. There's anything.
Nothing in there. I just want to let council know our new public works director begins Monday and I couldn't be happier. Um, and so I will bring her at the first meeting in February to introduce, since you also, well. Schedule permitting, um, be it your retreat on March first. She doesn't know about that yet, so I'll let her know. Um, and I wanted to give Director Vaughn a little bit of time to address one item with you and then we can move on.
Hey, uh, thank you, council members. Just to give you a quick update. Um, there was an item that was accidentally overlooked entering into the original budget. And it's the probation officer that would request came from our court. And they were requesting to change that F T E from a point two to a point three. Um, meaning that that position currently only works about eight hours a week. They need more just to keep the operations of the wheels on their their bus. And so they're requesting to expand it to twelve hours. Again, this was submitted during the budget process. Um, and it was with all of the moving parts, it just wasn't entered into into all of the works. Um, so I'm owning that as a finance mistake. And um, the value of that for the two years is around twenty thousand dollars. Um, that being said, um. It just, that is pretty much the summary of the overview. And at this point, uh, it might be acceptable to just let it ride and revisit it. At the mid buy to see if the city does need to make an amendment. Um, and potentially just leave it alone if we don't. Um, and amend if we do, because it is a a lower dollar amount.
Right, thank you, Director Vaughn.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, I did speak earlier with Director Vaughn and I do recommend that we just let this ride. To the mid buy to see if we need to make any adjustment. Uh, the dollar amount is low and uh it was well within what we had already spoken about.
Colleagues, any thoughts? As always, when these things happen, bring them to us early and often. Thank you. It's, it's fine. Everybody's good. Okay, we do appreciate the update. Okay, with that, we're moving on to an executive session. Um. This is amended. Uh, the executive session is potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty two dot three zero dot one one zero. Prens, one, perens, I, what are we expecting timeframe, Ms. Pratt? Fifteen minutes, okay? We'll be taking. No action upon return, is that correct?
At eight.
Sorry, Max. It just saves us all moving downstairs. Thank you for your flexibility, everybody. Okay, so we're adjourned to an executive session. And we're back from executive, executive session. Thank you, everyone. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second and second, uh, by unanimous consent, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.